Getting the meeting kicked off. I appreciate everybody in attendance. Before we get going, I know we've got general discussion. We sent out a countywide email, but we will tomorrow in this building, if you're in the administrative building, and I'll explain why I'm being very specific about that, but at noon, we'll actually have to close the doors tomorrow because we've got to shut off the water to do a water repair on a leak, and they actually have to tear up a big check of the back parking lot. So I know all the staff is really upset about having to go home early on Friday. And then for all the staff that's in other buildings that wants to say something, there was a few months ago where the courthouse had to close for a day because they had no water, and a short time before that, elections had to close for half the day because they had no water. So it's just kind of a rolling area.
Wrecked apartment, too.
You know, wrecked apartment had to do the same thing. So it's just the admin offices turn, and so for the rest of you, I hope you enjoy a great full day at work on Friday. But if you're in the building, you'll enjoy a little bit of a break. But we're wanting to make sure to get that out to the public. I know Graham's already got it out on social media, and we've got some signs of it going to work tomorrow. So we'll do our best to try to make sure we pass that information on, I know at short notice, and we will have people showing up, but that's just a necessity to get in the building up and going. It's hard to run an office this size with no bathrooms for a minute, so we'll leave it at that. We'll move through the agenda. I know we've got a couple that might be a little bit time consuming before we get into the department head updates, but the first is to go through the planning and development updates. This is where, you know, go through the record of what's going to be on the agenda for the regular meeting tonight on rezon, so that you guys are fully familiar and have a chance to ask questions on the record, you know, you need to. It is you.
The first one that we have will be Dana Sparks. They are at Pleasant Valley and Bear Creek Road, they're right there, the L.J. line, so that's kind of how we got the Bear Creek Road part of it. They are asking to rezon 36.33 acres from rural residential to agriculture to put it into conservation and farm. Recommendation the planning commission was to approve.
Anybody have questions on the maps? Or, I know they're taking it from rural to lower density agriculture within there. Trying to get back to the map. Any questions or anything?
No questions on that one.
Okay. See if you can get through all three of them like that.
The next one we have is Michelle Hamilton, L.J. Road. Request is rezon 17.72 acres from agriculture to rural residential. The purpose of the request is to divide the property into lots for resale. The reason for the rezoning designation is due to the lay of the land. Three lots will be approximately five acres, and the remaining lot will be 1.77. Planning commission did recommend approval.
All right, so looking at the map, I don't know if you guys can see it on the screen there, where the, I'm assuming where the road goes through there, and then you've got the small portion, little triangle portion on the bottom, is that the 1.77 acre?
Yes, sir, it is.
What's that road is that?
It's an abandoned road, I believe.
At one point, it was Drunkard Springs Road. It was a gutted road, and there's still a portion that's still Drunkard Springs, but that part right there is where it was abandoned, probably 30 years ago.
So are they going to maintain the road on it? Is that the, I couldn't really tell what.
They would create their own, it's what I heard from the election meeting.
Okay, so they'll be responsible for other road, right?
Right, yes.
Yeah, it wouldn't require.
It's not going to be a county road?
No, certainly not.
That shows the split there of each of the four lots from the package. Any questions? All right, we'll move on to the third.
Robert Burton, Highway 53 West, requests to rezon 4.7 acres from rural residential to highway business. The purpose of the request is to build storage units and RV storage. And the planning commission did recommend approval on that one as well.
So this is on Highway 53, right at the intersection of, is that Big Ridge?
Between Ted Hook and Big Ridge.
Trying to get to the map portion there. I know when it pops up on the screen, it gets small for anybody working with the screens behind us. Any questions on this request? Ms. Best, thank you for filling in. Appreciate you. Moving through those, and we'll have those on the meeting agenda for the 5:30 meeting. Next item we had on the agenda for the work session was to have Ms. Paula Pease go over employee handbook updates, something that's been done on a regular basis. We had a couple of changes. I know in December, we did implement the holiday, or not the holiday, the vacation birthday day, so people can get their birthday off as treated like a holiday, so I'm trying to list my ones up there. But we had a few other items. Paula had been working on getting a draft of an updated revision to the handbook if you want to go through the changes, and I think it's in both of y'all's packets.
Yep.
So you can kind of follow along, but.
And just for reference, the changes will be in green, and anything that's deleted, proposed to be deleted, be struck through. And most everything was done just for updates, for clarification and consistency across the policies. And on page three and four, I added something in there to clarify example of notices leave because it's just kind of open-ended, and I just put typically, you can see there, what I've suggested, kind of give a clarification. On page five, I've added some definition for authorized leave relating to calling procedures. And also on page five, we've looked at, I'm talking with Chris about this, and this is something that comes up about removing the 90-day requirement for new employees for sick and holiday pay, and that's something that's done for consistency across all departments. And page seven, I've added an explanation of full-time, regular, and temporary employees. It's a good thing to have it in there, but the birthday pay, that's a policy I've actually added in here, and it specifies part-time, regular, part-time employees. So I wanted to put that definition in there for that. I revised, on page 21, the non-FMLA leave policy a little bit for clarification and just consistency in administration. That doesn't come up a lot, but I feel like it needed a little bit of work on it. And as I said, on page 24, the birthday pay policy, and we have added a EAP Employee Assistance Program, and I just added that to the handbook to let people know that it's out there.
I think from an internal perspective, explaining on the holiday and using the best example I've come up with, if an employee gets hired November the 5th as a new hire for the county, then when the offices are closed, they just don't get paid, so they're short on each holiday check that comes through from that time period, which was one of the reasons by trying to pull that back. We're leaving it in place where you had to meet the probationary period requirements before vacation, but if you got sick and you had a day that you could take for sick leave, take your sick leave day. And then the holidays, so that people that had no option to work would still be able to get a regular paycheck, so that would kick in sooner rather than later. Over the past couple of years, department heads have had the ability to be able to override, a director could override, in certain situations, if it was something that was predetermined, and this makes it clear to where there's no accusation of one got it, one didn't get it, or it is across the board that that would be allowed. And I think Paula did a great job researching that. One other thing, I know that you changed a little bit of language, but we've.
The vacation.
Well, there was that, and then also on defining the clarity on exempt versus non-exempt employees, I think that's always been a confusing matter, is who's eligible for overtime versus who's salaried. So that added clarity, and that's straight out of FLSA regulations and law. It's not something we internally created, we use what the law says, so.
And this is a summary, and you'll see a few more just minor things, but there is one thing that I didn't speak about, is the vacation and sick leave. And the way it's been is we approve sick leave each pay period at 3.08 hours. Well, that is okay for an 80-hour employee, but I'm proposing to update the sick leave to be 10 days for 80-hour employees, 10 days for 29, 20-hour employees, and 22, 36. So that's public safety and the fire and the chair, to try to make it consistent across the board. And the fire vacation leave needed to be updated just a little bit to make it consistent. With the proposed, what I have in the booth, everything be across the board, the same percentage.
What the attempt was, was for you guys to get this, for this meeting, have Paula present it. You've got it, you can email Paula back and forth, call her if you have any specific questions. And then when we convene for our next meeting in July, we would actually vote on the update to the handbooks, that we would then vote, and I just didn't want it to be dumped in your hands and without context and be able to ask questions. You'd be able to then review it, and if any questions came up, or if we need to make any adjustments or amendments, then Paula could just email everybody direct, so that way you can see issues reviewing, or if you have questions for her that you want to see, just send it correct with her, and we'll keep that updated, and when we come back in in the July meeting, we vote to approve.
Come back.
Any questions? Well, she's here, and I know we've just got it.
If you're reviewing this while you were talking, it looks like you put a lot of work into it.
Yeah, it does.
I'll be glad to review it.
And the funny part is the back and forth, because there's so many legal guidelines on employment, that you've got to make sure that nothing got updated, so then sending it back to Phil to get him to look over a section, and then going back to where you're pulling the data from has made it challenging for sure, but thank you, Paula.
You're welcome.
Department head updates, I'm going to start over here, I know Roy had talked about wanting to go through a couple of things, so I'm just going to see if we've got anybody that way we can get over the time window if we go back and forth on that one. Yes, ma'am?
We got our cat upgraded last week. Just finished up a few minutes ago, the last punch down on the list, but everything getting knocked out, knocked out completely.
Everything?
Thank you all very much, we're good guys.
Everything went well, though, on the transition?
Yep. We kept Randy busy all day today, so thank you very much.
We've had him chasing us all, back and forth between the two buildings.
I already go home.
He's getting tired, that's what happens when you take one day, go nuts, we come back, and we saved it all for you. Yes, Kirk?
I'll go ahead and get mine done. We got started tar and graveling on Black Knob, the county line. We did get rained out yesterday, so that's kind of put that behind, but soon as we get some pretty weather, we'll get back started on that. Crews are starting on the section of Damascus between Black Knob and Big Ridge, they're starting to change out pipes there, so we'll have intermittent closures through there as they replace those pipes, kind of get it ready. If you see some crews gathered around some of our bridges, we've got people actually working up under the bridges, doing some minor repairs and maintenance on some of our bridges, if you see that going on. We've got the tractors out, we're running a little behind schedule on our mowing, but we have got the tractors out there trying to get caught up, and our paving is still going to take place, I just still haven't got a start date, though, man.
Any questions? Well, you did good work. Thank you.
I know.
They had a follow-up meeting with EXP, Kirk, he's stayed on top of it, he's already working through paving projects for next year. I think his goal is that we're going to be one of the first in the state to go out to bid before having to be one of the later ones to go, so they have met and started those discussions already in the middle, while we're waiting on this year's paving projects to kick off. Any questions on that set? Mr. Jones, how's the pool going? I just raised your blood pressure before I read it.
The pool was a pool. It's, had to close yesterday because of the weather, but we opened up today and just had a trickle of people coming in, so this kind of is what it is. Starting next week, we'll be tearing up the old walking track, so it is going to be messy down there for a while. I will try to avoid walking that roper for a little bit until they can get all the stuff down and laid and smoothed up, because it's going to be, it's going to be an active construction zone, probably three weeks or so until Kevin can get it done. But I did talk to him first of the week, and he said he'll be out there on Monday, start getting staged, so that's exciting.
That is exciting.
Yeah.
Flight football, how many, do you have a ballpark on how many?
Yeah, so flight football, so we will have 14 in the elementary school age, which is second through fifth, it's kind of a big age group. It's a wide range of ages right there, and then we'll have one team in the middle school group, which is the sixth, seventh, and eighth. So we have like nine girls in that age group, so.
I've seen several parents that were talking about how much their kids are enjoying, so I think that was a good addition.
Yeah, it's, it's grown. When, I think Fannin and Dawson kind of started it first, and then this year, Fannin, Dawson, Lumpkin, us, we'll have two teams, and I think White County, maybe Gilmore County will have one team, I don't know if it's the older or the younger age group, so it seems like it's starting to, you know, grow really organically. So in a perfect world, we would have, when I first set it up, we had three age groups. We had second and third, fourth and fifth, and then sixth through eighth, but the MFL ended up combining second and fifth together for just a big elementary school age, so but we got 14 girls in that, and that's, that's a lot, because you don't play seven-on-seven at a time, so.
This side of the room, before I get to Roy. Roy actually gave me a slide to be prepared, so I've got a slide prepared is the only reason. I'm not trying to pick on him and say he's a mouth, but I had actual graphics for him, so I was trying to get everybody else's in before, but I switched slides over. All right, Mr. Dobbs?
Hit it.
Hit it, yours.
Okay. We're going to cover a couple of different topics. We have sent the 2023 assessment notices out to all the property owners in Pickens County. One of the things that the legislature made us put on the notice of assessments a few years ago was an estimated tax bill using the previous year's millage rate. Kind of confuses people, it's not real actual information, it's an estimate, but nonetheless, they said we've got to put it on there. This year, this slide will tell you that Georgia House Bill 18, the governor, has given the homesteaded property owners a homestead tax relief grant, okay? I tried to put that amount on the assessment notices, but they said I could not, okay? So no other counties did either. And here's what it means, and that's what this slide is for, and this is what the education is for. When you look at the millage rates from last year in Pickens County on this slide, if you're in unincorporated Pickens County, which means you only get billed for county and school, you use that millage rate, the $18,000 amount that the grant is, you're going to save $366.08, okay? Daniel's office will be the one that gives that credit on the actual tax bill. If you didn't see it represented on the assessment notice, his office will represent it when the tax bill comes out, okay? The other thing that you're going to notice on there is you have three other living authorities in Pickens County. You've got the city of Jasper. The city of Jasper will also use that same credit amount, and on their millage rate last year, that would be a savings of 101.79, okay? Nelson, from what we understand, their 4.438 millage rate will be what is applied to the grant there, is $79.88. Then when you get to Talking Rock and their two-mill levy, you're looking at another $36 when they send the bills there, okay? So we want everybody to be aware, when they start hearing people talk about this, but they haven't seen anything, this is what it actually means to everybody with a homesteaded Any questions on that? Okay, we're going to have it on our website, Dan's going to have it in the newspaper, so hopefully, if we're handing out people, we have it in our office, so people understand how that works. All right, on our website, if y'all have been paying attention for the last few years, we have two videos attached on our homepage, okay? We're not going to go through the videos, but the first one that you see up there, Understanding Your Tax Anticipation Notice, was something that we developed last year that's tailored to Pickens County, more or less. It's a little bit shorter, but it will talk about what's going on during this time period with your assessment notices. The other video that's on there is on the bottom. This group of guys right here belong to a club, it's called the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia. That's their video. It's probably one of the best videos you'll ever see, that by looking at this for a few minutes, you can understand what's happening in the state of Georgia as far as assessments, millage rates, tax bills, and everything. That's a great thing. So anybody has questions, ever seem to be confused, that's always available. Any questions on that? Well, we'll talk to you, Craig. Now, got all that, got those. The other big thing that we've been doing annually for the last couple of years, because I know nobody's noticed that the county's growing, but if you have, there's a lot more rooftops each year than there was the year before. We captured new aerial photography in late January again of this year. We got a report this week that it has been delivered, it's been sent to Q Public, they're in the middle of processing it, so you'll see it on our website. Hopefully be done in one to two weeks, Stephanie.
Two weeks, I suppose.
Yeah, so you'll have good, fresh stuff. If you're looking out at Jerusalem Church Road, there's a whole lot more stuff out there than there used to be. You're looking around the interstate and everything, a lot more stuff than there used to be. And it's basically anywhere in Pickens County that you look, there's a lot more rooftops than there was a year ago. So that's fixing to be updated. I can't believe there's no questions on anything. Yes?
This ACCG video, was it on your website?
Yes.
Would begin work was on this.
Scroll down on the homepage.
Okay, see, thank you.
I'm telling you all that, when people are talking to you, you all work for government, this really kind of tells you how it all works together and why it works together, and there's some things, if you go to Washington, D.C., government can't do anything better, okay? I know that. But locally, when it comes to fire protection, emergency medical, 911 stuff, together, we can do things better, and that video gives one of the best explanations that you'll ever see. Anybody here?
I'm here. You're just doing such a good job explaining it.
Glad to have you all.
On the tax credit, is there anything that people have to do because of that, or is that all of that?
Great question, no. If you're already a homesteaded property, they're going to have that information in the tax commissioner's site, and that's what they're going to need. Good question.
I have a question.
Yep.
Is on that tax credit, is it a percentage of your tax dis, or is it that amount for every?
It's that amount, it's the $18,000 times the applicable millage rate.
I think that's, when you said that, I think it's important that none of these governments have set the millage rate yet. They won't until after the digest has all been submitted, so it'll be the end of the summer, early fall, or the millage rate gets set. So it's catch 22 on the grant, if we roll back the millage rate, however much you roll back the millage rate, rolls back to the savings, but it also gives you the savings on the other side of it, so it's a, it's one of those that, kind of a juggling thing that we'll have to face with when it comes to setting millage, which is, when you mentioned the federal government a minute ago, I think the state government, in their infinite wisdom, actually kept the ability to assess properties out of commissioners' hands. I mean, I'm sure at one point in time, they probably did it, and there's a reason why they took it away from them, but to prevent elected officials from being the ones that get to set their own budget and appraise the property, they took it away where we can't have anything to do with it, we can't have any influence on it, we can't in any way, shape, or fashion, so that's something that's done completely independently through the board of assessors, and they go out and praise the property. Those values are then put into the digest, and we vote. I will say that in the ACCG classes that we attended, I know, I think you went through it recently, I went through it a little while back, this is the one that you've got coming up. But in the classes where they talk about this process, they actually brag on Pickens County because the formula that they use to actually rate the department, the state Department of Audit, is when they're trying to rate counties and their performance, as to how close the assessments for the county assessments are to the actual sales data that's there, they have a formula that they put in and plug it in, and Pickens is one of the closest to dead on the money as any county around, so they, we sat in a class with people from all over the state and listened to them brag on.
Now, look at the camera, you should say that.
They were trying to brag on, we were trying to correct them, but Stephanie, they don't know, they actually did it, but they did, they used that as an illustration of an example when they looked at that number, to try to show that we are that close within, and that's done through an independent audit from the state. So I think that's important for people to understand, if this is statewide, the county didn't just come up with, hey, we want to assess, and it's, every time the real estate market's changed, we went through the same comments a year ago that we're going through now when assessment values went up, and it's just, it's one of those things that is part of, is part of property when you have a growing economy, and then there's a peak and a plateau, and there's all these different things that you have to go through, so. But according to the state standards, Pickens is actually dead on, dead on the money.
Go back to the homepage. Well, he's going back. I went through the same class at a different time, and they still brag on us. Now, go back to the green bar.
All right, so this one's actually created like a video, so when I go to that page, it just starts moving automatically.
Ah, right there, stay.
Well, I'm trying to make it. It took away my ability to control, so.
In that green bar over there, everything that he's talking about, the Department of Audit says, but you tried, you tried. Everything that he's talking about, we publish those reports on the website. They're going and pulling the transactions over at the clerk court's office, they're measuring everything that happens over there against what the digest is, so if you ever want, want to know what all those are, they're right there, and if you'll take time, they actually make sense. But yeah, we put up, we published every bit of that, so anybody that's got questions can look at it.
And if you read the assessment notice, if you have questions or concerns, or you feel like it's off, you have the window of time, and you can come and appeal, and you can challenge, and you can go down to the assessor's office to file that, and go through the process, and that way they can, they can get it corrected if there was, if there was something that was off, or if you have an appraisal that shows it's different, then that's, there's a window of time that's created just for that reason.
And that's our, that's our test, when we send the assessment notice, we think Fred owns it. We think Fred's got one house, we think Fred's got one barn, we think Fred's got five acres. So when we send it, that's what's on that notice. Now, when Fred gets this, if that's not his house, he needs to let us know. But there's so many things going on, but that's our test, we think you own it, we think we got the right deed warrant, we think we have the right attribute, we think we have the right value, let us know if anything needs to be updated.
Any other questions for Mr. Dobbs? Got to be really gentle with him, I just. All the, all the phone calls I've got, and I wish they were, they've asked a lot more questions.
Well, to talk about what Chris is talking about, we're the one. Well, to talk about what Chris talked about, we're the blunt level of government that you can walk in and talk to people. You can vent all your frustrations at the local level. You might not can drive up to Washington DC or Atlanta, Georgia, but you can come in and for whatever what you're torn up about in government, you can talk to us about it because we're taking care of your castle, and we understand that.
Y'all have anything further on the work session?
Good job.
Thanks.
Good work. We will go ahead and adjourn the work session. We do have our 5:30 meeting. We've got a couple of employees, well, also a young lady from our community who we're going to recognize tonight, that competed in an international shooting sports competition, and for Team USA, and won a couple of silver medals, so we're going to have her here tonight. So even if you just stayed for the first little bit to get to be here, I'd like for her to have a crowd when we do that. I think it's a, it's a little known thing, because not, I mean, it's not a commonly followed sport, that it's not televised the same way, but I think we definitely have a chance to honor somebody that did outstanding, so highly recommend sticking around at 5:30. Other than that, thank you all.